Six fifty nine. See, we do have a forum.
Anyone else?
Well, Kathy, Kathy said she was. Doug?
Sure.
Yeah, unless uh medical issue. Um, so let me open the meetings, welcome. It's the September twenty eighth, the last week. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh. We have uh. The minutes, we have a motion to approve the minutes. They were amended relative to showing it on tape, although they what he did. So you know, I've got Nathan approving in first and second list. Kevin, all favor? Okay. The uh. First, although we had a work session. Discussing uh.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifty eight hundred.
Yeah.
We'll have more discussions on there later day. And uh, Alter Gary. Yeah, I think everybody's pretty familiar with this process and your due diligence. Uh, just to open it up to Kevin, Nathan, Joe, if they have any further questions. No, none from Nathan, Kevin? Joe?
No, I'm good.
All right, I'm gonna make the motion uh to approve the amended site plan as presented for a boiler and process silo system per plan dated nine two nine twenty three. This is a modification to the multiple prior site plan approvals and modification. That's that's the kind. Modification to this large site, this approval is made with the following conditions. Number one, that the county planning board referral dated September twentieth, twenty twenty three noted in the following recommendation. The applicant in town must coordinate with the Anadag County Department of Water, Environment Protection Source Control Division regarding review of any new flow or increases resulting from the proposed work. The applicant in town must provide data regarding the increase in flow from the facility and the well advises of any wastewater flow increases resulting from the improvements would be subject to departmental review and approval of the industrial use permit. The board accepts the recommendation as a condition of this approval. Except this specifically modified here and all prior approvals relating to this site and all conditions there into remain in full force and affect an unmodified. Who was made the following condition, it's approvals for plans and other submitted documents. Site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work. Materials for the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan approval or so into the town to with code section one ninety two dash one twenty two. That's the motion, may I have it seconded? Nathan? All in favor? Approved unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to like this. Well, I don't think, I guess probably, you know, what Vern Henry has done and the number of expansions as a credit to their their success business wise, so basically all over the world and and their their engagement in the town of the way, so we thank you.
Couldn't do without you.
Thank you. Okay. Cold Spring Construction. Um, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read the script. Uh, Kevin, have you the latest?
I live, I live at six o'clock.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Well, she's pretty quick, but nothing later than that. Joe, did you have any questions?
None of your names.
Uh, I'm Joe Brooks.
Jeff.
Kevin, any other issues that you want? Uh, so we we heard you, so we have a a motion and a plan, what was the last plan dated, do you know what that is?
I I can look that up.
In terms of the last date that it was submitted. It was last dated with the following, but it just, we need, we need that date.
Okay, yep, yep, let me check my email right now.
Okay. Is there any other parties here that are interested in this project that are connected to the project? Wade, you know the dates? Oh, thank you.
By C N S. So I emailed it on August fourteenth.
That the date?
What's the date on the plan?
On the plan, okay. Go back to August fourteen.
I got eight fourteen twenty three.
Okay, correspondence with the email. Okay, this is the Cold Spring Destruction Rock Cut Road Motion to Approve. The plan dated date fourteen twenty three with the following findings and conditions. This has been determined to be accessory use of the currently permitted quarry use of the site, which is a high tech district in the town. The quarry continues to be a non-conforming use within the zoning district. Now, that kind of planning board referral dated twenty twenty three, September twenty twenty three, finding the referral will have no significant adverse inter-community or county-wide implications, conditions. The applicant has stated that the average truck traffic for specific use of their company is ten truckloads per day for raw materials brought into the site and approximately forty five truckloads per day to export finished product because of the issue of excess traffic has been determined to be a matter that must be reasonably controlled in this site in the ITech District of the town. The accessory use shall be limited to only used by uh salt city construction, uh, not third-party use. That acceptable? Okay, to D E C multi-sector in before you've had a contract, but that's that was the same. Uh, D E C multi-sector permit must be obtained as an M S dash core community town to wit must sign off on the same.
Yeah, we we received the uh that the D E C has accepted our notice and I had a few emails, but it.
I reviewed the SWIFTs when it's time. Okay.
So it's a condition, it just needs to be signed off, so we'll keep that condition in there.
Okay, in such, thank you. In such as the use is going to be a temporary nature for the applicant, this operation ceases. When this operation ceases, the applicant must restore the site. It was prior condition, this was to be completed by December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Uh, you're certainly come back again, right, for sure. Sessions needed by that time. Therefore, this approval is made with a further condition that approvals for plans and other submitted documents. Site plan documents have been signed by the planning board chairperson and applicant. It requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant or in person to the occupancy or compliance be issued. And those changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of the work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the town with code section one ninety two dash one twenty two. That's the motion. Jake, Jamie?
Yes.
The drawings from C N S, can I just say August?
Twenty twenty three. Okay.
I think they will receive.
Okay.
Last date is August. And submitted.
So I made a motion, Kevin, through, all favor? Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate your time here. Love the project.
Yep.
I know. Little Joss.
Four. Doug, you want me to pull it up on there?
No, we're, we have, we have one issue. The one issue was the extension of the plans to the west. We'd like to see those carried forward, that's almost more conspicuous than behind the building.
The commercial property to the left.
Your, your property, your line to the west.
Ordering.
West, sorry.
I guess we can do this. We have plans that show that they continue. It would be forty species. Uh, for forty, forty.
Whatever you showed us before. Oh, I thought you said we had a did we not have a?
So if this basis is selected, I have the email from Michael DeCarlo.
Yeah, but I thought response, okay.
Yeah, he said, uh, planes vary size in center, they should go over time. Um, that's uh, they revise.
No, we reviewed all that.
Okay, yeah, they don't include the wraparound on the fence, that is a great role, that is not needed.
No, but we are, we are, we are needed, that's.
Plan dated today, and I will roll them in sets. And you can see, it's not goes here, extend that Z shape.
The property lot.
Yes, already told you. Perfect.
All right.
So, so the the lands, the site plans that I looked at were last dated September, that, that landscaping plan, or is it all, is everything today?
Everything stays with that.
Okay.
Uh, most to approve the site plan including the landscaping plan is presented in the last day dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three with the following findings and conditions. Now, that kind of planning board, you can open it seventeen. Noted that the referral will have no significant adverse inter-community or county-wide implications of our support. Takes note of specific comment about the Anadag County Planning Board, which has been a subject of concern for the planning board, specifically the help minister of street parking lots from the road, for the adjacent residential uses. In that regard, with the board expensive time with the applicant and to come up with a plan who addressed the issue of reasonable screening of this business using the direct decency to residential parcels since the practices for this required by the design guidelines of the town, zoning code, similarly situated business slash residential boundaries have solid fencing particularly where the business property provides little opportunity for appropriate vegetation and screening. In this instance, the board again prefers a matter of procedure, which is residence. It defers to the protection of the neighboring residential properties and solid fencing is perfectly fair. However, the board takes note of the following. Allowing for a planning plan in less than solid fencing option of the one the applicant recently installed possibly a pay fest to replace the one that's structured when that kind of kind of was required to be placed. There were town phone and no other improvements anticipated to the neighboring property owners had indicated objections to the existing pest barrier and three the applicants. Other significant improvements to the site and knowing which have been used more compatible. Final landscaping plan presented worked out with planning board consultant, consultant for applications acceptable to the board that's revised September.
Well, I, I.
It's nine, my date is sorry, it's ninety.
Ninety.
And there's gonna be a condition on the landscaping continue.
Yeah, I anticipate. The only thing I want to add is that these, I want to have a condition for Harry and Doug that these plating be maintained to the level of uh I have an issue further down.
Uh, so we have a note on here, and you tell me if it's acceptable, not put your clause. All landscaping in the lawn area shall be maintained by owner, dead materials shall be placed, electric materials shall be regularly moved, and nor should.
Yeah, I would say it's at the same, like, you know, and I want to start off fresh with little things, but at my rate, I think we got that, but it's enough, you done?
Um, plan.
Okay. This approval is made with further condition, uh, for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents are in, been signed by the planning board chairperson. Chairperson, the applicant requires that all the work done shown by completed applicant work were to be completed by the applicant or in person to the client permission. They propose changes, additions, or additions to the scope of the work or materials. Site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further type by the code. Pursuant to the thousand with code section one ninety three, dash one twenty two. All in favor?
No, to be a second.
Second, Kevin, all favor? unanimous, thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Yeah, well done.
Is there anyone behind me that can hold these up?
Holy cross. But you can, you can carry on, this is.
One second.
No, take your time. Yeah. Are you with it? Holy cross?
No.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, so I like to, uh, the holy cross, we're waiting for the, right. Yeah, and it was a date.
Yeah.
That is, well, maybe.
September twenty.
Okay.
And the date of, oh, I don't understand it.
Yes, yes. Doug, you know the plan date for holy cross?
Thanks, Christian. In digital, yes, first thing in the morning, okay, thanks.
Well. Which we're gonna bring to.
Yeah. Eight twenty one, I mean, that is down.
Back to the point.
Eight twenty one, eight twenty one. Eight twenty one, thank you. Holy cross, this is a motion to approve the plan dated eight twenty one, dash twenty three, as presented with the following findings and conditions. This is a minor renovation to an existing building and in a safety vestible fuel for students in the same general footprint of the building and space that existed on the site. Two, the planning board referral dated September twentieth, twenty twenty three, finds a referral will have no significant adverse inter-community or county-wide implications. Three, this approval is made with a further condition, an approval for plans and other documents. Site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and applicant and require that all the work shown be completed by the applicant or in person to the occupancy. It's the issue. Any proposed changes, additions, deletions to the scope of the work or materials for the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan approval. Pursuant to the town with code section one ninety two, dash number twenty two. Uh, make that motion. Oh, Joe seconded it. Spread them well, and all favor? unanimous. Thank you. So for that, we have two other items, are you here representing the labor neighbors?
Yes, I am.
Okay, sir, I'm not used to that. Other names, um, come up, this is what we call a concept review.
Yeah.
Usually we don't act this much this efficiently, but the items that we get. What kind of, I have no complaints for months.
Yes.
You're doing great. I think the tigers. Lions. Well, on these concept reviews, ten or fifteen minutes, some, you know, ten minute, yeah, we'll get it up on, do you have the?
I have, I have.
Last I heard, anybody wants that.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And uh, we've been through this with the full board, we apologize, we have a medical. But the whole board's review. Your, your plan isn't, okay? Big concept engineering in the book as well. So congratulations on your expansion, all that's good news for.
Well, they're, they're kind of, and just we, we did uh did the carpenters union over in Thomas Silliner in seventeen. Just did an addition, we'll start up probably in the winter. That's for the carpenters, this is a similar approach. They see Mike running coming, they know that. Start.
So you're comparing us with a Thomas Silliner planning board?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
So I want you to get your hopes up.
Your name?
I'm Bob Seigert, S E I G R T.
Let's start with the site plan, okay?
Okay.
And you've already sent this to the Anadag County, so. Right on track.
I'm your architect engineer. Thank you.
With shop room.
Architect, thanks.
Complicated. Good, stop back for a second.
Yeah.
Get off the videos. Yeah, across the. All right, so um, basically what we're doing here, they, they, we first looked at trying to do an addition to their existing building. Which is, it's really a seven hundred five one apply road. So there's not enough. So they have a contract to purchase this, I believe it's seventy one square acre property, or designed them to the training center. So it's a one-story, eight thousand four hundred and forty-seven square foot building um, for hands-on training to laborers. Um, so what they're looking for with, what most of the spaces, probably three quarters of it, is a large, open room um, with concrete surrounded, dirt floor in the middle, uh, where they can train year-round. They'll do things like setting up scaffolding, they'll be digging and laying pipe. They'll be hooking up pipe for uh, for the cranes and rovers to use. Um, they'll be working on base three, you know, laborers assisting masons, um, they'll be learning welding. Um, those, those kind of things, but this is an indoor facility. Um, so uh, what they're, what they do right now in the existing building, most of the existing building is offices for the pension fund and for the training fund. Um, in the back, they have rooms where they do classroom training. And it's, you know, it's uh, they're, they're not able to do anything much more than some demonstrations in there. Most of it's book learning, they show them some videos, but um, they, they need a place where they can actually do the work, learn how to do these things.
So is this similar to the Dick Safely building?
It is, in, in some ways, yes.
As a wit, and we did approve that a few years ago.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, but was it similar?
It, it is, it's similar, similar in use, yes. Okay, so, so um basically, uh, what, what we, what we did here was we placed it reasonably close to um, to the property line of their existing property. Um, just because they'll have laborers, labor trainees going back and forth between the buildings. They typically, they show up first, they're gonna park in the back parking lot, that's where they park. Um, behind the existing building, they go into the existing building, they do their classroom training, then they'll come out and they'll go into this building.
So they come outside, is it?
They, they, they'll come outside, yeah, it's not, I guess they figured they're tough, they're laborers, they, they can handle the walk. But um, yeah, they go outside and then into this building.
That would, uh, any questions on this aspect of it, we, we looked this over, my, my one thought, I, I just want to make sure we get the parking.
Yep.
Uh, so what, what's the staffing level on the ordinary day without your, your your trainees?
Without, without the trainees? Um. It's maybe ten.
Okay.
They, they, they're, I mean, they have a big parking lot, but there's, they, they never have more than ten employees there.
So then, then it brings in how many trainees?
Um, they, they would bring uh, maybe thirty at a time, if they had, if they had two classes running at the same time. Um, they, they would.
Which they could do.
Thirty, it was, which they could do with this facility, that they can do the classroom training with thirty people right now, and they just, they don't have this component on it.
So how many, what's your parking now?
Uh, the parking now, I believe, is seventy.
Is that, what, what's the square footage, just?
The existing building is uh, just a little over twelve thousand, twelve thousand sixty-four square feet.
The other building would be more of a square office, the office, the one, one fifty. I'm trying to think about how we. We just, we're just trying to figure out what we, what's the code bill requires, you need to do a chart for us.
Right.
And do the math.
Okay.
And then, but we also, we don't want to have more parking than you need.
Right.
But it may require a Z B A.
A lot of the barriers probably off hours.
Is your chart on there already? Um, there, there is, there is.
They're not doing classes during the day, I imagine. And you're the ones I see.
I don't know.
But the sheet mail guys are all after hours stuff.
Plumbing guys, so that went too.
No, that's not a, it's not a chart. Is there a chart? I mean, it, it's got zoning information on it. Yeah, just, just, it, it, they haven't done the calculation, that was one of the big questions we had, I mean, when I looked through your parking requirements. Maybe between office, warehousing. Well, we, other, it doesn't give me a lot of.
Well, we have some discretion relative to how we would, clearly you have the office space and.
Yep.
And it's based on what the use is.
Yeah.
And if the other one is.
Well, you could look back at what Dick Safely.
Yeah.
It was the same thing.
They just treat it the same way.
It's, it's apples to apples.
Yeah. So we would look at, we would look at what the regulations are, because we, yeah, conform to them, there, there is a loss. And then we'd look at what your needs are, you put that in writing to us, and then we decide, but you may have not need any Z, any Z B A bridge.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, the issue here is that obviously the offices, the offices were, are, they're occupied during the day, seven to four. Any training that they do is either evenings or it might be Saturday morning.
Yeah, I'll just point that out in the letter, I mean, but you may not need to, you know, I don't know if you want to decrease parking or not, but the.
No, we, I mean, we were looking to put some parking in for the new building on, on that site. So it's, just for convenience, um, really, I mean, we could live with, they, they could live with everything that they have right now. Um, we are showing restriking that backlot because it's totally illegal right now. The spaces in the aisles don't comply with any.
With, with.
Educated, you are.
No, they're not nice. No, they're, they're not. So we're restriping that and adding these spaces, but um, yeah, we, we, we know that with the space that they have there with the new property. They could, they could build.
So you want them to the property now?
They don't, they, they have, they have a, they have a contingency on it, basically. Um, they, we were looking for a concept review just to see, okay, is it likely that we can build, that we can do this? If it is, then um, they'll, they'll go ahead and purchase the property.
Well, I don't know, the question I have is on the, on the. Well, another question I have is on the, on the site plan is the, the storage of your equipment they use to train. Where will that be?
Well, their intention is to keep most of that inside. If they put anything outside, it would be behind the building, I suppose, but they're trying to keep everything inside.
They'll do outdoor storage. That's, you know, they'll do outdoor, so it's, it has to be.
That's, I mean, that's, that's their plan.
They're gonna have to agree to our plan.
Yeah, sure.
How to put that, I see. Okay. How about some architectural reality there?
Yeah. So what we're, what we've got here is we've got a large volume, this is thirty-five feet tall. For the large volume. The reason for that is they want to be able to build a couple stories of scaffolding in here. They've also, they're also planning to put a bridge crane in here. Not that laborers use a bridge crane, but they are responsible for hooking up pipe and other materials to a crane. And so they will practice that, they will practice doing welding and going off welds and those kind of things. And then they'll see how it works with the crane, so it's purely for teaching purposes. That's the reason for the height for the primary portion of the building. The off, what I'll call the office area in the front. It's got an office, it's got bathrooms, and it's got some storage and a welding shop. It's, it's a small welding shop for, for, for pre-vamp stations. We use them at the carpenters union all the time, they're pretty neat, and that allows them to, to, I think, a small group welding.
They're not just as a side, because they're last one. Really, well, that is good. Did you, the carpenters union is that the one that has a funky design building?
Ten Buckley Road?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, any funkiness in this?
We, we, we might, we might, I mean, the laborers are a little bit.
I was gonna say, build an architectural job.
No, that's just my layman's term. Are you seeing the laborers building?
Yeah.
Yes. It, it, I like it, but I'm not expecting something like that, that's industrial district.
Yeah, it's industrial district, the laborers are a little, they're not quite as flashy as the carpenters. Although they might debate that, but.
Step up their game.
Yeah.
Later, but I'm gonna defer first to Nathan about any architectural comments. And make the materials prime. Color choices.
Yeah, we're, we're trying, we're, we're, we don't, we're not exactly enamored with our existing building. You've seen that, I mean, it's a block building, it's kind of a brown and tan, most brown and yellow. We're trying to have similar color palette here. But, you know, that's, we're working through that with the, with the laborers right now, what they want this to look like.
Well, you're missing two of our other architects on it.
Those windows are.
That cow wall, give a little bit of daylight into the building.
I mean, it is what it, it's a box.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, you may benefit from not. Directly referencing the adjacent building.
Yeah, yeah. I know, it's, it's.
Not great. No, I mean, it's ATAV panel, which are panels. Warm wise, I think it's, it's fine, I mean, it's a utility function.
I trust your judgment then.
Where's the air conditioning? That will be on the lower portion in the front of the offices. I've got a parapet wall there right now that's about three feet tall. So that should be, that should hide it, and we'll play with that depending on what you put in there, but it's gonna be, it's a very small, I mean, it's generally an office, not a main building. What's that? You're not air conditioning the main building? Big building? Well, no, I mean, we're, the only part that's air conditioned is actually this piece right here.
So, so to Kevin's point, make sure that on your elevations, you're showing the mechanical equipment.
Yeah.
There in reality.
Yeah.
In screen.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I was saying that, I mean, that shows a parapet wall there, so the roof is down three feet from the top of that.
Right, but if we look at the, if we look at the site plan. You know, you're able to see from Bagley, Bagley. From there, you see the building, so even a three-foot parapet, yeah, not gonna conceal unless that equipment is three feet.
Right.
It's gonna be above your parapet. Up close to the building, yeah, sure, your sight lines will probably prevent some of that view, but from the road, you're gonna see that, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, it's, it's a, my mechanical electrical engineer is working on that now, but she tells me it's gonna be a pretty small unit.
Yeah, it's like, just regardless, showing up there, it provides some screening from it, so.
Okay.
See it.
Okay.
Hide it.
Yep. We can do that. This is the rooftop, they're not that short.
Yeah, right.
I mean, they set up a fourteen inch parapet. The minimums are thirty. You know anything? So the next step is to. We didn't cover those roads, I don't know if anybody briefed you on the.
Yeah, you eliminated.
I saw, I just wanted to be sure that.
Yeah, we, we removed the driveway, you know, and the, the. We only showing it there just in case you wanted it for emergency purposes. The laborers, the laborers don't, don't want it, they don't see a need for it. And we showed filling in the driveway.
Yeah, using them in on that one bank graphic plate, and it's not the red drawing. It's your, the one top left and the other tab.
I don't know, that one's right.
Yeah, that's it.
Anyway, this graphically.
Yeah.
From, you know, remove the gray line showing the, you know, the road through there.
Yeah.
Remove, you know, both sides, so that, yeah, cause right now it looks like the road's still there, they might put a little grass on it, like.
Oh, no.
That's why I have to.
Okay.
There's some heavy road on there, but.
I mean, this is a sensitive area, Long Ashley Road. There's still significant residential, so we want all the traffic down that.
Yeah.
That's why, so we don't even have to add a line there. So we're playing those up, what else? Nathan, is there anything else you wanna say? Excellent.
Was the. What's occurring? We're not sure. I mean, it's behind the. Existing building is seventy fifty one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I mean, this property actually, you know, has a piece that, that fronts on Fly Road. But it's also on Bagley Road, so I'm not sure what the address is going to be, but I'm hoping it's Fly Road something.
It's not landlocked or anything, right?
No.
No.
There's any to that.
No, they, and then they feel like the, the trainees always come in their main driveway off of Fly Road. The existing driveway. So they don't see a need for any other, and frankly, up, the portion of their site that does go to Fly Road, that's wetlands, so we're not going there.
So I guess what I'd suggest, recommend. Is because of Doug and Kathy and Les' absences. Terry, if we could put them on a work session with the changes that we've recommended, you know, eight o'clock. On Tuesday, and it may not be necessary, but once they see this information, but then we could keep it on track to.
Okay.
Are we gonna deliver the written comments?
Yeah.
Review your color palette. I would suggest that the next either work session or meeting in front of us, make sure you bring materials.
Okay.
With it. We're looking at this architecture, we also require all sections in there. Screening.
Yeah, and, and, so the work session I'm doing is protection, those plants come in and we look them over and we want to be in the work session.
Okay.
And we do that, so that's, could be, personally, primarily it's Tuesday, what's the date of the? Session?
Well, they, how much need be delivered, they need to give that, whatever they change, so there may or may not be a work session required, right?
What we put in the sound is gonna be the first one here. It's track B.
It's on track B.
Why about the next? You say it wasn't? But the work sessions are the opposite, right? Work sessions, so we go the next, so. Or the workshop. It's too easy. Yeah, the, the. Friday or October. So maybe that I would be up toward that. Workshop will be the seventeen. Or meeting. Now, to answer your other question though, I don't think any of us have any difficulty with the concept, do they?
That's really what the, what the, the laborers wanna know first and foremost.
I'll just say, Joe, you have a good sound, but I think it's a good view.
Second important.
That should be the ten. The work.
We can't forget my stuff.
But, yeah.
I thought it was like November.
He will give you those days, but regardless, you're on track B, which is your next day.
Right.
Or we now, that week. Fourth Thursday of October, then Tuesday.
Work session. Chicken with Terry.
Yeah, it's the inside.
So if you submit.
Or there's a workshop.
Right, you submit in time, we'll get you on the twenty fourth workshop, if it's needed, right?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you may then move right to the Thursday.
Okay.
For approval, for those, the checklist will come in.
Workshops in the meetings are the opposite time. Workshops are still the Tuesday of that week. But they're not fully done, they're not on the, it seems like if the workshop was, it's entirely a week from now, and you have the workshop, and then.
He has time to.
But they don't have time to get everything together, no, the workshop.
If it does the workshop the week of the, the meeting, he doesn't really have time enough to, yet.
So.
Hopefully this, and we're a little visible side.
Yeah, this is a sidebar, has nothing to do with. Directly, so we shouldn't be doing a workshop and then final approvals. That's right, a workshop should be part of the preliminary, so that week we do a workshop, we do a preliminary review, and, and then they take any of our comments from there. We submit for their final, and we don't do a workshop in the weeks that we do a final approval.
Well.
That.
Exactly. They'll take it, oh, but then there are another one.
That is the way that we've been doing it, generally about pre-session thing. So.
All right, well, I'll let you.
But you might not need a work session.
You might not need a work, just do what we asked you to do.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine, that's, we're, we're not, I mean.
But as far as the purchase, you know, you're gonna assess this.
That's, that's really what they wanted.
You don't wanna hold anything up, but.
Go ahead and purchase the property and we can, we can get my engineers working on this.
Yeah, this is all manageable. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. So we wanted to talk about the parking. We wanna leave, Nathan did a review, but I had Amy give us the, the law and the changes, and we also put in. Nathan's comments.
He's done with this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the idea being planned this was that. CBA was like, why doesn't the planning work just due to reserved parking? But why stop coming to us, it seems like it's something that's better suited to the plan, but. So that was the, that was the impetus of this change, and you're gonna see the other changes that just referred to the M U V, but they're, they're. So. The, the thing that. Nate was saying is are we, are we limiting? You know, what, what we're trying to do here, so. What you have is what was changed, so let me. That's not very good.
Different.
I know, but likely to have.
Well, no, the word, Nathan's here, surely.
Just his, just his comments, his written comments are out there. So. So if a, a building is less than ten thousand. We, we took out a paragraph over the chopping center section that talked about. Reserved parking and when it could be allowed. So what Nate said is, wait a second, sometimes there's something less than ten thousand square feet that used to be able to get for twenty-five percent reserve. Now by taking out that whole section, it.
Right, even in, even in the mixed. Mixed use, right, this is all. This is just the parking, so.
Yes.
My concern was. We have a lot of properties and tenants and the people that come in. That their space is nine thousand square feet. And if they come in at nine thousand square feet for their building, like, how big's the one that just goes up here?
It's eight thousand.
Right, so they show seventeen parking spots in reserve, they would not be allowed to show those seventeen parking spots in reserve, because their building is under ten thousand square feet.
What page do you know?
So that's gonna be. And it's shown up.
That was E two, E two, yeah. E two, okay. There's up to twenty-five percent of the parking for any use that is greater than ten thousand square feet.
Yes.
Area. So that laborers union that just came in front of us would not be allowed to show any parking room. Even though they may not need it, we're now gonna thwart them to put seventeen parking stalls in place because their building is less than ten thousand square feet. I don't know if that's something that we get over.
Well.
You know, you wanna, you wanna codify.
Oh, no, right, I, I, so.
I thought always putting reserve with those, the reserve means.
It is, but, but you want, you, but there are certain limitations of how much you could put in reserve without. And some of it's not variable. So we just, now's a good opportunity, so.
Right, and so, but that's, but that's the, we've always recommended to the, the CBA, whether or not we felt it was appropriate to, to reduce the parking based on their intensity of use and their need. Not have them spend the money unless it became a real issue to let that park again. This line here effectively takes that out. And only allows us to do it on properties that are greater than ten thousand square feet, so anything less, doesn't matter what the intensity of use is. They have to put on.
So why don't we change it to like five thousand, so that way it's. The little, little ones, right, you don't want anything reserved, maybe because there's not a parking.
Probably with this trigger.
Why you need.
Yeah, so I was gonna, why, why, I, there might, I can think of a five thousand, shoot me.
There's no place for reserve over there, so that's not gonna work.
So, yeah, I'll take out the, the square footage.
And I'm, and I'm fine with that, because that gives us the ability to look at the site and look at the use, you know, make a decision on our, I mean, I think it still should be twenty-five percent. I don't think they should be allowed to just put as much as they want.
Right.
But based on the size of the building and the required parking, you're allowed to put up to twenty-five percent in. Reserve as long as you demonstrate that it's not needed.
No, I.
But they haven't planned for it still, I mean.
No, because of the change of use, if somebody else comes in and moves, you, you wanna be able to require it.
Right.
But I, let me just, let me just play devil's advocate, I'm a twenty-five percent, what if. Let's use the pathology lab. They, they've got. They've got a hundred and ten thousand square feet, they've got, they need seven hundred plus parking and they. Hundred ten thousand square feet, they've got, they need seven hundred plus parking and they think they need two hundred.
Well, they'd have to go to CBA now, or they they can take their chance at the DGA, or we take out and we say, listen, we can give this much.
So ZDA will be on twenty five percent? Yes. If you want, okay.
I think that's the, I think that's appropriate, I mean, that's an unusual situation. Because you still wanna leave the discretion in the CBA that has to go through a criterion for something that's greater. Everyone agree with that?
Yeah, no, I agree, I just uh that's what I always, hopefully, majority of the cases, there should be a.
Well, the interesting thing is because now you put the twenty five percent. If they really wanted thirty percent, they're gonna go to twenty five percent. So I don't know what are historically what the DGA has been granted, usually, but I mean, we have a week to give you that percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a few, and then they require letters, because this is where you're, that that we require a letter, depending why. Uh so we don't, just sort of come back and look at the income of the start ups with the kind of here in the lawyers, let's see, feeling.
Well, can can I?
Or not perfect, just, that was only the end of perfection.
Because we only have that twenty five percent in. This particular section is not very well done, so the applicant shall also submit competent information. And that's pretty, pretty wishy washy and ladyish if if it gets appealed to anything, you know?
You know, what is called.
Right, right. But competent competent information is justified by the reservation of the thing, but not limited to.
Yes. So your occupant load.
Evidence of occupant load of the building.
You know, sort of staffing, visitor, uh customers, visitors.
Well, that's, I mean, that, I don't even know the E though, that part, you're just leaving. Okay, because that will, that will define how many people by fire department are allowed in that building. So. Go go ahead, I will, where's an instance where you've got more people than are allowed? I thought I thought it would be based on use.
Reasonable. Well, it was said, if a can show something just by reservation, we've got limited evidence, I can approve the building. Intended use.
Right, because our our parking units. That's what a building goes, you know, occupant load for office spaces. You get down to a theater and thinking about something that shop or foundation, that's gonna be, you know, less than that, your occupant load is gonna go way up. So your parking count is gonna go way up, I'm sure parking count or parking code accounts for theaters or X amount. Spaces, or whatever it is, so.
Well, I think, but it's, but if we're just saying, let's let's look at the kind of thing, what what do we look at? Occupant load, intended uses, employee. Uses.
Staffing.
Uh shift work.
Yeah, we look at that, that's like a random, yeah, random was a perfect example of that. Yeah, but to to a certain extent, you you have to rely. I mean, it is losing use as it sounds, you have to rely, sometimes what the applicant tells you. Oh yeah, that's why we asked for that letter, but we always have the right with that letter, that it is the resolution that if there's additional need. They have to, we can force them into the reserve parking.
Right, but all this is, I mean, all this is going to support their argument for reduction of parking, right? Sure, that's what that's what we're talking about.
Absolutely, I'd rather more green space, even if it's empty asphalt parking, but.
But you want to make sure too that um. Everybody, I want twenty five percent less, right, so you have to have some reasonable standard.
Right. Then that's based on staffing, current staffing, so I see, I see that side of the argument on there, I I see. Yeah, I mean, that's. I guess they have to demonstrate the current use, and I guess to some extent we have to believe them.
Yeah, if you do, so you know, you know, the case in point was where that was our lifestyle when it was. We were highly skeptical that that the parking that they wanted was gonna work. So there, I think it was before your time, Jamie, but but there.
What what could have been before my time, let me tell you right now.
But 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 there but there was, there was a resolution that said, there's a, you you will provide bank parking, you will come back to us. And one year, and they came back, and they 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 had key studies, so they had the same building. The same exact building in like five other cities, and you know, they came and they said, we don't know you working the job, right, I mean.
It's never been overparked, oh yeah.
Never, never, they said, you know, people just don't have cars, I don't know what to tell you, right? And they were very skeptical, and they came back and everybody was like, you guys were right.
Yeah.
But 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 there was a banked area and we just got rid of the banked area.
But I kinda like that caveat almost that. You know, if they demonstrate with staffing or, you know, that there is a customer. No, well, there's a, there's a requirement on the applicant, was a little burden in your office. In one year's time from certificate of occupancy. To come back to this office or in front of the board and demonstrate that what they told us actually works. And and it's like.
Well. It says, it already says here, within thirty days from the date of a written notice from the department, based upon a departmental observation. That the parking in the facility is insufficient.
If they're required.
Applicant has to file an application, just like play review.
So I don't think they need ticklers for every year, I think that that it's, they're gonna be notified, you'll see the traffic. My my issue, a couple things, two things that I I I wanna be sure, one was the the cannabis, uh the retail on uh. You know.
How are you gonna have statistical studies on that?
Well, that one, see, now that one is, I think it's obvious, if you look at other cities outside of New York. Where they have a comparable uh facility, and you can see the kind of uh population uh.
Historical data for similar use.
Yes.
Or empirical?
I mean, the people that alerted us was the Medmen, and they said that, you know, the sixty wasn't gonna be anywhere near enough, and here they're talking about twenty four minus six. They're talking about eighteen spots.
I I think they're totally different business models.
Pardon?
They're totally different business models.
What is?
No, I think.
Medmen was a shopping experience, you're hanging out there forever, taking forty five minutes to figure out about a bike. These tend to like more like grab and go.
I don't wanna debate that now, the other question that I wanna be sure, that and this was, this came up in the uh in a couple of this is. But the one I did just recently is is the pathology lab, that they just kind of built this and said, here's your fifty, five hundred. Parking spots, and I said, I know, I wanna, I want it to look like Amazon, I wanna have, you know, pedestrian traffic safely, you know. The the correct uh spacing for the, you know, parking spots and and the proper landscaping with islands and things. So, you know, that, just to throw that in there, we need to to make sure that there's enough square footage in their reserve. Or to 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 build what we need to have, but if it's not them, then it's gonna be another medical use, and they're gonna need that space.
In reality, they should just. Buy the forty feet of space between them and. Cause there's another car and lawn, it's already there, I mean, they're an island, right?
Who?
Yeah, they have the.
Pathology lab.
No, not the pathology. That's an island, right, there's, there's, they have a frontage because of highway, right, but there's a a space between. Them and Kenny.
They're not much.
But but it's paved, it's a parking, you know, area, I don't know who owns it, part of um. Whatever the.
The shopping?
Shopping town, so it's like, well, circle around a long time before I had a little piece from them and they extend their part.
Well, they have approached, they already approached the road, I mean, there's. Now, the only other one, just for last application reading, we sort of grew up on is that the Christopher House is uh. That it was a substation behind Key Bank and not again Plaza, that's a senior housing. Yeah, and they told us, just like what you were saying, they didn't, they, there are seniors that have that much parking. We we required to even reduce it somewhat, but we required it, it never been over that. That could have been all green space. Never been over that, I drive by it ten times a day, I kick myself every time, I should have listened to it, and they. They had plenty of, put it reserve, they park their people in just sustainable neighborhood, they bought. You know, into the the bakery and Kruger. So I didn't want that to be able, you know, to be more receptive, I I think that money was going with us or anything else on it.
I don't, I don't think so, did anyone notice anything, I I, this is almost the thing about legislation. You can start, you change one thing into the, you know, into something else, but I think um. I think that it's, there would be a recommendation, those two things, and I'll, I'll send that off to um. It is, it is, and that's why we've got the food thing in front of us, and then that people knows that one little change is fifty thousand, fifty thousand and one. It needs to say. Yeah, you had a question about, it looks like the exact same, and I had to go back and look at it myself.
Well, I'm I'm gonna pick up on it on the third.
On the chart where it's in red, zero square feet to fifty thousand square feet, and then the next one is fifty thousand and one square. It used to say fifty thousand, fifty thousand.
Right, so. Exactly fifty thousand, which which direction.
So I don't know, we picked up on that, eh?
So Nathan, to your side note, um, you know, your state is like getting further space side at nineteen. One zero feet. My understanding, it'd be eight, uh nine point six, which is very generous. We have reduced that at times.
Right, but I guess that's what I was like, I don't think I ever thought that our our town would require nine six by nineteen. Or the stall, but I know it does, but are we checking the prepared building perfectly, I was like, I think I've always seen nine foot.
No, I think they follow the code.
That's what I'm just hoping, that's being. Well, what's what's the what's the tenor of the of the board, I don't, I'm not advocating change.
No, I wa- wa- why not?
Because it's so squished.
Going with, yeah.
I think we, I I I. The width, but they can always go to the CBA and a variance on that.
Yeah, okay, but that requires a variance, and we we we.
And and there might even be an instance where some of the spots would be.
A place, a place where you notice it. Jase. Those are probably.
You know, on the other hand, you have.
You feel cramped.
Yeah, right.
Marshall is not much different.
No, actually, those are close to the brand, yeah. Well, Whitechapel has the double lights.
Yeah, and so that's, that's where you're getting nine six, forty and ten foot, yeah, yeah.
But they need to look for their customers, because that's why, like, this is our.
The number one, the latest poll.
No, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, so, so that, do we all in favor of those changes? And I'd like to um, okay, make a motion to adjourn the meeting, I have some motion that got. Go, second, third, fourth.
Peter, I just wanna mention, the only thing we have on the table on track, uh A for next month, is the Wimbledon golf course, we gotta. Updated smittle. So if you want.
Oh, good.
If you wanna get them in for a workshop.
Well, we we do a concept review first.
Oh, we've done a concept review.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, it was so long ago, that's awesome, so he was waiting.
They've submitted and.
Yes, it's been through you this week.
Oh, that's great.
So we have to review it.
Yeah.
So that that came in on time, the other one came in today, Sidholman came in, emerged as what, uh Woodchuck Hill subdivision. I've seen it, yeah, but it is loaded up.
No, this is the. Yeah, that's right, I I was thinking you were thinking of the kind of uh the corner.
So this discussion, remember, and basically, it's all subject tanks and um storm waters, bunch of issues. Those probably would be, I don't know if you might even come up for an update and next Thursday's meeting.
Well, is it subject, it, you know, it really needs engineering.
Engineer, I was gonna say, Doug and and Mark have way in it.
Yeah, but it's in on time, on schedule.
Okay, so then get, send out, send it to Mark and and Doug.
You know.
And then look at it and tell us what we should do. Okay, that sounds good, I'm happy that that London, that's gonna make a huge difference. He was waiting for some, I think, survey work, I can't recall it, or landscaping.
I haven't watched it running twenty seven, but.
You all know what that is, that's a London golf course, they're gonna, there's a house that can only really be used by the golf course and not in any other purpose. And they wanna move their operations to that side of the split between. Five and twenty, is that ninety two over there?
I think we had given him a bunch of comments.
Yeah.
Originally, when I saw.
Yeah, he was, and now, so that'll all be landscape, he will demolish the building. But then, you know, burn some things and landscape and then uh use the house and then, I think, you're right, we did, we gave a parking and. Some ideas, which he was amenable to.
We don't have a lot, I'm, you know, can be due next week.
Okay, uh we'll get it done, thank you all, you're welcome, now where where do you, where do you come from?
Um, I'm from Syracuse, born and raised, um previously worked at, she's still back there. I know, this January will learn ten years, so it's been fun.
Nice, nice. If you all said, you have your thoughts with later.
Institute of Transportation, then you're, commentary generation rates for the peak hour, substitutions, marijuana dispensary. Units of measure. One thousand square feet. So, how do you know how big the old public council was?
Five thousand, isn't it?